Roll call, Chairman LaRue.
Here.
Vice Chairman Empemba, not here yet. Uh, Member Aspeo?
Here.
Member Cavino?
Here.
I see, I see, pretty much yes, he's here. Uh, Member Raymond?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Here.
Member Rappaport?
Present. Okay, um, this is, the town of Burlington will be holding the May 21st, 2020 Planning Board as a virtual electronic meeting due to the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus. As such, the Governor issued an executive order on March 12th, 2020 authorizing remote meetings under General Law Section 30, excuse me, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20.
So this meeting is held via Cisco WebEx and is accessible as follows. Um, there's a link on the Planning Board website. It's also placed on the agenda on the town calendar. It's townofberlincolnwebex.com, townofberlincoln, um, j dot P H P question mark M T I D. Uh, anyway, it's on our website. You can access it there. The meeting number is 716-816-222. The password is lowercase k, 532-H-Y-E-U-Z-8-V. Um, the meeting can also buy access via dialing 1-408-418-9388 with access code 716-816-222. The meeting is also being broadcast on DCAT, Government Channel Comcast 99, RCPM 15, Verizon 41, and streamed on Facebook Live via the DCAT Facebook page. Public input, the public will be able to make comments during the hearing during the time for public comment. Questions can be asked via WebEx, phone, Facebook Live, WebEx Chat, and email at planning@berlincoln.org during the meeting. All persons wishing to ask a question or make a comment must identify themselves. If you have any questions regarding participation during the meeting, please call Planning Staff at 781-270-1645 or email us at planning@berlincoln.org. I also want to remind everyone, when you're not speaking, to mute your line and remember to unmute you if you would wish to speak or have been called upon. All votes will be taken by roll call vote.
Thank you, Kristin. Um, I think we need to start off with a few continuances.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, take Item 6A out of order.
Thank you.
Member Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Empemba? Not here yet. Um, Member Clerk Aspeo?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Raymond?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Okay, um...
Could we get a second on that motion?
I, sorry, I seconded it and I was on mute. Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, so Item 6A is a continued discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, 3 and 5 Dartmouth Road, General Walker Estates subdivision. General Walker Estates is the applicant.
So, um, I just wanted to give the board an update. We had our last meeting, we had, uh, last week, we had a very productive discussion among department heads, um, the Development Department heads regarding this project, also with Taylor giving, um, having a conversation about the recommendations that, um, our peer review Taylor Doughty made with BSC Group, um, as well as some of the comments from the Planning Board. And, um, talked about the, um, the raise, the questions about the raise of the grade, the questions about cleaning out the drainage system, addition of, um, the silt, um, sedimentation erosion controls. So, Vice Chairman Empemba? Not here yet, about, sorry, I'm just, get distracted when I have other things in my ears. Um, anyway, so that meeting was very good. There was a discussion, in this discussion was also with the applicant. They had Wayne's Drains clean out the system last Friday. Um, also there, um, Steve Dresser, the applicant's engineer, submitted information on the grading that Taylor just reviewed, um, the middle of this week. The information from the cleanout that was critical to, for the departments to kind of understand the sys, the functioning of the drainage system and what they had wanted to take a look at prior to sending the revised comments to the Planning Board on Taylor's peer review as well as, um, any additional comments they have on the minor engineering change. So that work was done last Friday. There were photos sent, um, earlier today and the camera work that was sent later on this afternoon. Um, so BSC is reviewing that, um, and will be sending comments back to us so the departments can weigh in. And what we had really wanted to provide for you is the, a revised comment from departments before, um, you know, you may, would make your final decision on the minor engineering change. So our recommendation based on where we are to date without those comments is to continue this matter until the next meeting.
Thank you, Kristin. Um, may I have a motion to continue, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter until the Planning Board meeting of June 4th, 2020.
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Empemba? Member Clerk Aspeo?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Raymond?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport? Yes. Okay.
Madam Chair, could I just ask, uh, staff a question? Can you?
Of course.
Uh, Kristin, uh, when will that information from the department be available, do you know? And could we get it through for the next meeting?
Um, yes, we, since we've just received it, we've asked for Taylor to turn it around quickly and then send it to the departments and that we should have, we should definitely have something to you by the end of next week, um, prior to the fourth meeting, as well as for the applicant.
It's been hanging around for a long time, so if we could, if we could vote on the fourth and we could have the information early and maybe have questions prepared if we need it and be able to vote on the fourth, that would probably be good.
Yeah, we intend to, with the department recommendations as well, to, you know, share it with the neighbors prior to the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to tie it, Item 70 out of order?
Thank you. Thank you.
Chairman LaRue?
Um, I have to read it, I think.
Oh.
Don't I?
No, this is taking it out of order.
Oh, yes.
So Chairman LaRue, Vice, is Joe here yet? Joe?
I don't think he's here.
Okay, so, Member Clerk Aspeo?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Raymond?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 7E, this is, I'm sorry, this is Chairman LaRue. Item 7E is a public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw Article 2 definitions and Article 4 use regulations to address and define uses pertaining to short-term rentals submitted by the Planning Board.
Um, so for this matter, um, we recommend to the Planning Board that it go to, and we recommend and concur with zoning bylaw review, um, to hold, push this zoning amendment to the September town meeting, um, and therefore ask for a continuance till July 16th.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of July 16th, I believe.
Madam Chair, this is my second.
Chairman LaRue?
Thank you, yes.
Member Clerk Aspeo?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Raymond?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Madam Chair, this is my, I'd like to make a motion, take Item 7F out of order.
Chairman LaRue? I'm sorry, Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Empemba? Oh, sorry, Member Clerk Aspeo?
I actually just got a text from Joe. Um, he's trying to get in, just playing music and not letting him in.
Hmm.
I wonder if perhaps we could see if, um, someone on staff could maybe drop off and give Joe a call and help him out?
Um, I will text, does Brady and Jen, do you have Joe's?
I can send him a text.
Tech, okay, you do have that, all right. If you guys, if one of you can do that, that'd be great.
Um, thank you, Brady.
Okay, where was I? Was I reading roll call or?
Yes.
Member Aspeo? Member? Member Cavino?
Yes. Yes.
Member Raymond?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, that was to take, I just, I got a little, um, that was to take Item 7F out of order, is that right?
Yep, yep, so when I, Item F, yeah.
Item 7F is a public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw Article 1X, administration and procedures as it pertains to permitting procedures submitted by the Planning Board.
Uh, so we would recommend also that this be continued to September town meeting. It's with the kind of question mark as to how we're holding town meeting. We're trying to be accommodating and things that can wait, we're just, you know, September's around the corner, so.
So do we want to?
We recommend continuing.
Paul, I make a motion. Uh, I make a motion to continue this matter, the Planning Board meeting, July 16th, 2020.
Second.
Chairman LaRue?
Uh, do we want to continue them to the 16th? If we're not going to do anything until September, do we want to push it out a little bit further so we don't have to do this again in two weeks?
Well, September's, if you think about it, September, July, you're going to have July meeting, August meeting, and then one meeting in September, so.
Okay, all right, so then, yes.
Let's cross that bridge in July.
All right, yes.
Member Clerk Aspeo?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Raymond?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Madam Chair, this is my, I'd like to make a motion to take Items 7M and 7N out of order.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Chairman LaRue?
Member Raymond, second.
Member Clerk Aspeo?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Raymond?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, this is Barbara. Item 7M is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.3.2.6, outdoor storage of supplies and equipment incidental to permitted uses, subject to requirements for location, lighting, screening, fencing, cover and safety precautions of the zoning bylaws, 376 Cambridge Street, The Granite Place Incorporated is the applicant. And Item 7N is a continued discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, 376 Cambridge Street, The Granite Place Incorporated is the applicant.
So, um, for this, you guys, um, it's been continued a few times. Um, we have Frank DeFicio, the applicant's engineer, just to give us an update on the reason for continuance, but not to take, um, public testimony since it is being continued. Um, and also, as I had mentioned in the meeting preview, I think it would be wise, since it has been quite some time, to re-advertise this in general. So, um, because I think it's been over, if it's been over a year, we definitely need to do that. So, um, but anyway, with that, I would, um, recommend that we allow Frank to give the brief update. I know he has to jump to another meeting at 7:30.
Thank you very much. Good to see you all. Hope you're all doing well. Um, this is my third virtual meeting of the week. I have one after this, so it's interesting. Uh, and I congratulate you on running a very good meeting so far. So, um, getting on to The Granite Place, not to, uh, hold you up. Um, I've been in contact with Carol Gomes, who is the owner, and turns out that shortly after February, beginning of March, uh, she had a difficulty with the new landlord, where they, as you know, they're going to be relocating all of their fabrication, uh, to a new building or to a building, they're going to be fitted up in Wilmington. Um, apparently the deal conditions changed, uh, and were not very favorable to, uh, The Granite Place. They spent the next couple of months, the beginning of May, uh, trying to resolve that issue. No work was done on the tenant fit up. Uh, they were sort of stuck between a rock and a hard place. My understanding now is the, um, deal has been approved and signed, so they have a, uh, a lease. And now they're, um, I'll use the word discussing with the, uh, new landlord, how fast they can get the fit up. And so that's the reason for the delay. As soon as they have the fit up done, they're going to move everything out of the site. Now, in the meantime, I've had several discussions. Uh, we went over the Planning Board's comments, uh, I think from the March 13th meeting that were received. They're aware, they've agreed with them. Um, they've started to do a little bit of landscaping. They have put some mulch on the slope down towards Van Norden Drive. Uh, they haven't looked anything up the site. Sorry? Someone?
Joe, is that you calling user four?
Yeah, I'm in now. You guys, you guys gave me the wrong code, the wrong number and the wrong code.
You caught on, folks. Next time you got to be better. Um, sorry, anyone? Yes, sir.
Okay, Frank. We're all together now.
Alrighty, so, um, what they're looking to do, uh, as soon as they can get a date for when the, um, that will be done, they're going to move all the equipment, all the materials off the site. Uh, and as soon as I find out that date, I will let the Planning Board know. In the meantime, they have engaged a landscape architect to do some design work. Um, I did see, uh, the email from, uh, it was David Murray. We'll be ready to address that at the next meeting, but just one quick item. The, um, plan for the site is to put up a four-foot-high fence along Van Norden Drive and around the corner, and then put some evergreens in front of that, just to clarify that issue.
Okay, good.
Double area. Um, that's the status right now. And again, I am in contact with, uh, the folks there very, very often, um, on a weekly basis. I've been dropping by there and reminding them of things that they may want to take a look at and take care of. They'd be happy to answer any questions.
We don't want to have too much of a discussion since we're continuing, but, well, just on the, um, continuance itself.
Madam Chair, Paul, I mean, I do have a question.
Yep, Rachel, go ahead, Paul.
Uh, I, is, did you say a four-foot fence?
Yes. Uh, and the reason for a four-foot fence is you don't need a building permit for it.
Well, I think that's a, you know, kind of a weak, I, you know, a four-foot fence is, comes up to my chin. So I, you know, I don't know how much, I, I think if they're going to put a fence in there, I'd put something that gives, uh, the people on Van Norden, uh, better protection than that. And, you know, if you put some greenery along the bottom, so what? That's not going to help as far as, uh, what may come over the top of that four-foot fence. Just my thoughts on it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Paul. Joe, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yep, that was the exact question I was going to ask. I, I don't think four-four is sufficient. I think you're going to have to go to six foot, but. Well, I, I realize it takes a building permit, but building permits are, you supply and you get it. It's not, it's not going to hold anything, right?
Okay.
Just to clarify one item, the evergreens we're going to put in are right outside of the fence, at the same elevation. They're not at the bottom of the hill there. So there will be some, it'll take time, obviously. These will be 10-foot on center, but they will provide some additional screening.
So Frank, you'll have a new plan for us to review if, if necessary before the next, before the 18th?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And I'll also look at addressing the comments that came in from Mr. Murray.
Uh, thank you.
Alrighty. Have a good evening, folks. Take care now.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you, everyone else. Um, I think we have a motion to...
You want a motion to continue?
Yes, please.
I make a motion to continue this matter to the next meeting of June 18th, 2020.
Second.
Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Empemba?
Yes.
Member Clerk Aspeo?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Raymond?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, um, this is Barbara again, and next we have citizens' time. If there is anyone, um, present who wants to ask a question about something that is not on our agenda, please identify yourself. We'll give you a minute, and I'm going to, I know we have planning staff monitoring various outlets. Please let me know if someone has raised their hand. All right, I'm going to assume no one has, and we'll move on. Um, next item is the, uh, statement that was sent around to all of you earlier this afternoon. I hope you had a chance to review this. Um, this was a result of a meeting that Kristin and I had with the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen and with Rick Parker, representing the chamber, and with Melissa Tentakalas and Paul Sagarino. And we were just discussing how we, um, want to support our local businesses as they plan for reopening. So this is a statement that, um, we wrote in conjunction with Melissa. Um, the Board of Selectmen has not yet had a chance to, to vote on this statement, but I believe that they will do so at their next meeting. And, um, so if any, does anyone have, do we need to read this into the record, Kristin?
Um, you probably should.
Yeah, okay. Well, before I do, let me see if any members have questions, concerns, or comments about the letter that you read earlier today. Okay, well then I'll read it. Okay. All right, "A joint statement in support of our businesses, May 20th, 2020. The coronavirus pandemic has offended the livelihoods of countless people. In Burlington, we have been eyewitness to the struggles of local employers as they have responded to the public health crisis by limiting business activities and in many cases, closing businesses per the state mandate of March 13th, 2020. Over the last several weeks, working together amid many sacrifices, the most recent public health data has shown a reduction in the spread of the virus. Given this data, Governor Baker has announced a statewide plan for reopening business which began in a limited manner on May 18th, 2020. In support of the state's reopening efforts, the Burlington Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board issue this joint statement of support for our businesses. This statement is intended to reaffirm our commitment to the economic engines that reside in our community and encourage our fellow residents to safely support our businesses and shop local. As our businesses and local employees work toward reopening and the longer journey of recovery, the elected officials of Burlington wish to express support for the following: Temporary creative approaches to generate business activity; Expedited proposals for temporary uses and special events; Consideration of proposals to allow for public spaces to be used for certain business activities on a temporary basis; Temporary healthcare and test services in non-traditional formats. The town, including the planning, building, and health departments, will be working on a streamlined permitting procedures, on streamlined permitting procedures to help businesses get up and running in a timely and safe manner. Procedures will take into consideration issues such as safety of patrons and staff, emergency services accessibility, circulation and parking, and equity among all businesses. Um, we are going to vote on whether or not to put this statement out tonight. It'll eventually, hopefully, be signed by both the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board, but as I said, stated before, they have not had a chance yet to vote on this. So, um, I'm going to give you all a chance once again to ask any questions before we go to a vote. Okay, um, so we do need to vote on this, right, Kristin?
You should.
Okay.
Um, I mean, you can say motion, I didn't put a motion, but, you know, motion to support the above statement.
Okay.
And then roll call, so Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Empemba?
Yes.
Member Clerk Aspeo?
Yes.
Member Cavino? Member Raymond?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay.
Who made the motion and who seconded it?
Uh, I, I made the motion. I don't think anyone seconded it.
I'm a little confused with that.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next we have announcements. Kristin, if you could take those?
Sure, um, town election, um, we have passed the day to register to vote. Um, it has been rescheduled to June 6th, beginning at 8 o'clock at the Burlington High School. I know that the town clerk is pushing a huge effort for mail, mail-in ballots. All the information can be found on her website. Um, town meeting has been rescheduled for June 10th, uh, at 7 o'clock in the Burlington High School. I know they're still with their measuring tapes, trying to figure out if it's, I, I don't think they can fit everybody in the auditorium. Are we going to be in different rooms? So they're definitely still trying to figure out the logistics of town meeting, hoping that they can, um, we can pull it off on June 10th safely, so. Um, it's, it seems like it's moving forward. It will move forward, um, but, uh, still working out the details. Um, also, I wanted to highlight for the board, the Middlesex 3 and New England Real Estate Journal have partnered up on a couple webinars, uh, webinar series. Um, and they are all, they're free to Middlesex 3 members, which all of you are. If you're interested in joining, there's a couple really good topics. Um, the COVID-19 impact on real estate construction and housing, real estate development in the third and fourth quarter, future of real estate and life science, which, um, I think you'll see some familiar faces on that panel. Um, sustainable real estate and development, and sustainable real estate and development. So I think all of those are interesting topics. They are definitely in our region, so, um, and a lot of information. So you can go over to the website. Um, also, a reminder, the federal census is a thing, and I know we're all very busy at home. Um, and we have all probably gotten that little piece of paper that says it's our duty to fill out our federal census, so I'm just kind of tooting that horn to make sure everyone does remember to do that. Um, and then finally, the town census, which also is very important for us to make some decisions within town. Um, and I also have not heard back from Liz yet, um, but as Brady said, he texted her today and she didn't get back to us, so we're hoping that today is the day, but when we know, we'll let you guys all know.
Kristin, I do have an update. Um, no baby just yet, um, tomorrow, though.
Tomorrow, oh, we know tomorrow. Okay, well, we'll, we'll tell you, we'll give you news when we have news.
Great. Thank you, Brady. Okay, so this is Barbara again. We do not have any legal notices or non approvals, so we're going to move on, or administrative matters, we're going to move on to matters of appointment. I am looking for a motion, please.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to take Items 7A, 7B, 7C, and 7D together for discussion purposes and to vote on them separately.
Second.
Second, sorry. Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Empemba?
Yes.
Member Clerk Aspeo?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Raymond?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, this is Barbara. Thank you all. Um, Item 7A is a public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article 2 definitions and Article 4 use regulations to address and define uses pertaining to parking structures submitted by Escudel Realty LLC. Item 7B is a public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw Article 5 Dimensional Regulation Schedule as it pertains to parking structures submitted by Escudel Realty LLC. Item 7C is a public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw Article 7 Parking Structures to modify the requirements for parking garages submitted by Escudel Realty LLC. And Item 7D is a public hearing petition to rezone property to the General Business District, 1 to 3 Ray Avenue, Ray Avenue Trust is the applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. Thomas Murphy here for the applicant, Escudel Realty LLC. I believe Michael Murray is also on the call. He's, uh, also from, um, Escudel Realty LLC. Uh, as I'm sure the board recalls, um, we've discussed this fairly thoroughly over the course of time. And at our last meeting, um, I think the, the general consensus was everybody kind of discussed it enough. Uh, we were going to put the matter to a vote. The only remaining, uh, issue to be determined was on proposed, uh, Section 7.2.7.3 green space requirement. Um, what percentage of the footprint of the proposed parking deck would be required as the minimum amount of, um, of green space on the, on the lot upon which the parking deck was going to be located? In the proposal last week, we had 100%. Um, there was some sentiment from some members of the board to bring that up to 200%. Uh, one of the members of the board suggested maybe 150%. Um, long and short of it, we had to have the final version of these articles into Town Hall on Tuesday, the 12th, I believe the date was. Um, so we've already submitted them and we used the 200, um, uh, total. Uh, so that's what, um, our understanding of, seemed to be the consensus of, uh, of some members of the board, anyway. Uh, and that was the, the most conservative of the three numbers that were being discussed, but we agreed to go with it. So the proposed, um, Section 7.2.7.3, uh, requires, um, 200% of, of the, uh, the footprint of the, uh, of the parking structure. Um, and I think, if memory serves, that was basically the only thing we agreed was, needed to be determined and discussed at this meeting. Um, uh, but obviously, we're happy to address any other questions the board might have, or if there's anything else. I will also note, there was some discussion, um, about design input and things of that nature. I will also note, there was some discussion about design input and things of that nature. There was nothing put in the proposed bylaw for that, mainly because we hadn't really thoroughly discussed it. We didn't have an opportunity to do any further subcommittees on it, and there were no design standards that we're aware of. But having said all that, I assure the board that we certainly don't want to put an ugly structure right next to our restaurant, and we will work with the board and take whatever input the board might have in terms of the design. But the intent, as it always has been, the practice with the Escudal, they do a nice job down there in terms of the aesthetics of their property, and they certainly won't do anything different with this, with this parking deck in the event it's approved. So with that, Madam Chair, I know you guys got a long, long evening ahead of you. Like to get out of your way as quickly as possible, so feel free to ask any questions you might have.
Thank you, Tom. This is Barbara. I'm just gonna see if Kristen has any questions before I turn it over to the question board.
Sure. I just wanted to highlight for you, I also have Article 37, which is included in the definition section, which you'll be voting, but Article 37 are the definitions that have been proposed by ZVRC, the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. So I didn't know if you wanted to have Sheri talk about those at this point, or after we talk about the Escudal, I just want to make sure that I give her the chance to talk about what's been submitted in the warrant for the green space parking lot and parking structures definitions before we vote if there's any questions for her on that issue. Otherwise, in terms of the Escudal proposal, we, I did attend the zoning bylaw review committee meeting, and they, they were uncomfortable with the design review component in the, putting it in the zoning bylaw. They were encouraged that we could talk through it during the site plan review process. I will add, I had thought that we had design review in the district, which I think I mentioned at the last meeting, and in looking through it, the design review criteria that is on the 5-over-5 building is actually in the special permit itself, not the zoning for the district. So, so I did misspeak at the last meeting and wanted to correct that. Otherwise, we recommend that, that we recommend voting this evening on what has been placed in the warrant, and again, just making sure that Sheri has a chance to explain the additional definitions.
This is Barbara. Thank you, Kristen. Why don't we have Sheri speak now, because that way, when we go through the board members, they can ask questions about all of these items at the same time. Sheri? Is Sheri here?
She was here.
All right, well, why don't we do this?
There I am. There I am.
Okay.
It unmuted finally. It has processing delay. So as far as the definitions go, the only change that came about at our last meeting from what has been presented pretty much all along, was that we had an additional comment from Andy Ungerson, the building inspector, about adding the, I gotta pull it back up here again, a second. Where the retention and the, where's the, I don't have it up in front of me, so I don't know if you guys have it. I didn't, I wasn't prepared to speak this evening, but hang on a second, I'll see if I can find it.
This is Barbara. Sheri, which one is it? I can just read it.
Right. Just the definition of the green space, the first one. It's the last sentence that was added by, sure, by Andy.
I will read it. It currently reads, it's 2.7.4.1 green space, an area of grass or trees or other vegetation set apart for recreational or aesthetic purposes.
No, no, no. It has an extra sentence on the end of that.
So we're missing something?
All right. Yep, you are. It was submitted to Betty the day after our meeting, so bear with me, I'm gonna have to pull it up on my.
Thank you, Sheri.
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I grabbed the ones, the last ones Betty sent me, so, yeah, I'm sorry. I thought I had the newest ones.
Okay, so I can read it off. It's the same first sentence, is an upland area of grass, trees, or other vegetation set apart for recreational or aesthetic purposes. Retention areas and designated wetlands are not green space.
Okay.
That was, that's only, the only change that, from what I understand, Betty got into the warrant, so that sentence should be in there. And that was just a concern on Andy's part, to make sure that that was included.
So retention areas and wetlands are not considered?
Green space.
Designated wetlands are not green space.
All right, thank you for that clarification, Sheri.
Sure.
Okay, so Sheri, did you have anything else you wanted to add before I turn it over to the board for questions?
On the definitions, no. I do have a comment of what the board, or the committee members voted upon for the section 7.2.1, whatever that one is, with the green space in the building. So when you get to that, I'll have a comment.
Okay. Okay, here we go. I see. All right. Well, I think we're going to be discussing them all together, Sheri. So since you have the floor right now, why don't you make your comment now, and then members can respond each in turn. Is that okay?
Okay. So I can read off what we voted on and approved for what our idea of this section should read.
Okay.
And it is, parking structures shall not be allowed in the BG District unless the parcel within which the parking structure is located has an equivalent square footage of green space equal to 100% of the footprint of the parking structure, unless through a finding of the planning board pursuant to a site plan or special permit. As described in section 9.2.0 and 9.3.0 of Article 9, they determine alternative public benefit. So basically, we took out the word upland, because now upland is part of the green space definition, and we changed the wording to 100% of the footprint of the parking structure. And that is what we felt was acceptable to our committee. So, and I think that was a unanimous vote.
Okay. I don't think we have the word upland in there, do we? On our version, so that we're the same on. It sounds like, from what you read, I think the only difference between that and what we have here is you said 100%, and we're saying 200%.
And from the wording that we had, there was a building area footprint in there, but we took the building area out, because we didn't know what, so I don't know what.
Yeah, that's, that's what we have as well. Green space equal to 200% of the footprint, whereas yours was 100%.
Okay. Correct.
This is Barbara again. Thank you, Sheri. So let's see, if we have some questions from the board members. Joe, would you like to go first?
Yeah, no, I'm all set.
Okay. Mike?
I'm all set. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Ernie?
The only question I had, and it really just occurred to me now, even though I didn't attend the zoning bylaw review committee meeting, is that in other, in other places where we, actually, it's not, I'll take that back, because it was the building inspector who added that last sentence, so I defer to his expertise. And the only other point I had, that we're saying 200, the zoning bylaw review committee said 100, I imagine that they will be asked for their recommendation at town meeting as, and we will make our recommendation now, is that, that's how it works, right? Yes. I'm all set, Barbara. Sorry, talking out loud, thinking out loud.
Thank you, Ernie. Paul, do you have any questions or comments?
I just, I thought somewhere along the way that the proponent had agreed that he might be willing to make a contribution for something that was off-site in kind of response to the lack of green space and so forth on the site itself. So I don't know if that went away. I know that we're trying to do a sculpture park, and there was question of whether he might make a donation to that or not, but I haven't, that kind of disappeared, and I was just wondering if that's permanent disappearance.
This is Barbara. Thank you, Paul. I do know that, I think in section, the green space requirement, section 723, 7273, it does say that unless it's determined by the planning board that there is an alternative public benefit, and I think that was getting at the possibility of the applicant providing green space somewhere else on, off their site, if they could not accommodate it on their site, and if the planning board determined that that was a public benefit. I think that will be worked out later when they come to us for site plan review, but that's all I recall. I don't actually remember the discussion about the sculpture park committee, which, shame on me if that happened and I forgot, because I'm on that committee and I should have thought of that, but I don't remember that. Tom, would you like to weigh in on Member Raymond's question?
I also don't remember any discussions about the sculpture park, to be honest with you, but I would agree with you, what you're reading on the proposed article is, is that if we, if the board goes with the 200%, or if Tom Eaton goes with the 200%, then anybody looking to put a parking deck on their property has to have at least 200% of green space under the new definition of green space on the site. And if they don't have that, the planning board, through the special permit process, if they determine an alternative public benefit, which I think what we've been discussing would be green space off-site someplace, or some sort of improvement off-site someplace, the board has the authority to do that during the special permit review if it's deemed necessary.
All right, this is Paul. I guess that's the best we can do, so that's, I just brought the question up because it was on my mind, but I don't want to belabor it.
Okay, this is Barbara. Thank you, Paul. Is, did you have anything else?
Uh, no, I didn't.
Okay, thank you. Bill, would you like to weigh in?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question from Ms. Ellis, with regard to the design review. Why did the, your committee not think that's appropriate?
I think the consensus, and Ernie, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, was that you're penalizing a proponent by making them have double the amount of green space of what they want to put in for a parking deck.
I'm sorry, Sheri, I'm asking about design review.
Oh, I'm sorry. We just didn't feel that, first of all, there's not enough time for this town meeting to consider it. So that was something new that we hadn't heard of before, so totally, we would want to look into it more. I think, though, that also, some of the members felt that it doesn't belong in the zoning bylaws. Perhaps it belongs in the planning board rules and regulations, but I don't think some of the members were, were keen on having it in zoning bylaws.
So can staff, can you comment on, on that not being in zoning bylaw and being in some rules and regulations of the planning? Staff?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the very front of your question, Bill.
So there's, there's, I guess the, the committee said that it probably didn't belong in the zoning, but it belonged in some sort of planning, what'd you say, Sheri? Some planning, you said there's another.
Rules and regulations.
Rules and regulations to say that.
Yeah.
Yeah, is there an appropriate place in the planning staff's rules and regulations that that would go in? And I tell you why, and I, you know, certainly, this particular applicant is going to make a beautiful, a beautiful, wonderful parking deck, right? But again, this is, this is, try not to be spot zoning, this is going to apply to other people that are going to have this opportunity. And again, we, we're planners, we're, we're planning out there, and we all know that this is just for this one particular site, but there's the opportunity for other sites to do something with it as it goes over time, and I'm not talking a year or two, I'm talking as we're planners out there, when things change. And things, you're seeing a change from a Raytheon site over there to, to a retail site, and you don't know what's going to happen in another, you know, 40, 50 years, you know, just, my mother worked at Raytheon over there, never thought that would change, right? So I, I'm trying to understand where this might be, because, you know, my travels around have seen very ugly parking decks, and if you, if it's saying, let's do it later, that never happened, Sheri, right? To tell you to get another bite at this. So maybe, again, to the, to the question to the staff, is there a place in the planning staff's rules and regulations that this could go? And I don't know where it would go, but would you say, for any parking deck, you know, we get, you know, design authority? Where's the right place?
So you can, you can put it as a requirement in the site plan rules and regulations for submission, and then in terms of what you're looking for, for submission, like you do in the site, in just, in general, what's a requirement for site plans in terms of the use? And then in the special permit, it is a special permit, so you do have all the criteria that you have to meet, and part of them, I think, part of the special permit criteria, I think, can get at this question as we got to it in terms of the district and the 5-over-5 building, that we added criteria that needs to be met prior to their building, prior to them submitting a building permit. So I think there's a couple different ways we can get on it if it's not in zoning, and I think we can continue thinking about it. If this does move forward, it doesn't preclude us from continuing to think about how we want to be thinking about aesthetic control over parking structures in general, in other ways in the bylaws.
Okay.
Or regulations.
Yep. Can we then maybe put that on the minutes, and, and so it's, it actually stays there until we close it, so it just doesn't, all often, everybody forgets about it, because I, you know, like, if we say, okay, today, and we wash our hands of it, we're very, everyone's very busy and things like that, you know, can go by the wayside, and I'd just like not to see that happen, because an ugly parking deck is, is something I don't think we want to see in the town. And I know it's not going to happen here, but you've got the other opportunities where we've got to really think, think, think in the future.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, this is Barbara. Are you, is that it, Bill?
Yes, thank you, Bill.
Okay, thank you. Brenda?
Nothing else to add. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, this is Barbara again. I have some questions. First of all, I completely agree with what Bill said, and I share his concern. I want to make sure that we now put this in on our priority list. We need to get that in there, because we are going to be seeing more parking structures in Burlington if this goes through, and we want to make sure that they're not ugly parking structures. Like Bill, I feel pretty confident that the Escudal is going to do a good job with this, but we have to think about what other property owners in the future may do. So I think, I'd like to, I like Bill's suggestion, we need to keep this on the list, keep it at the forefront and get it done in a timely fashion. I also have some other questions, and I wanted to make a comment about the 100% versus the 200%. First of all, I, I thank the applicant for agreeing to go forward with 200%. I'm sure it was not an easy decision, and it is a big sacrifice, and I recognize that and appreciate that, because the reason we were asking for it is because we want to make sure that there is a benefit to the town to allowing parking structures. I don't see it as a punitive measure at all. I see it as a protective measure, and I wanted to state that. Then I just have a couple of questions. Tom, now that we, if you, assuming this goes forward at 200%, I know that you already have quite a bit of green space on that site already. In terms of square footage, how much green space would you be adding if this goes forward at 200%?
My understanding of the, the dimensions of the proposed parking deck, I believe, if I'm correct, is 62 feet by 182 feet, which, if you do the math, that's 11,284 square feet of footprint. And under the 200% rule, if that's what is adopted, you have to, square feet, it would have to be 22,568 square feet of green space, as that is now going to be defined in the new bylaw, on the site. If there were less than 22,568 square feet of, of green space on the site, then whatever the delta between the actual amount on site is and the 22,568 would have to be dealt with versus some sort of alternative public benefit discussion with the planning board during the, the special permit process.
Right, that's what I'm asking. What is the delta?
We haven't had the thing surveyed, but from what I understand. But from what I understand, and I think Michael's on, online here, um, it's, it's, it's likely that we're, we, we meet that right now with what, what's on the, what's on the site with the, um, with the landscaping and, and whatnot. Um, now clearly, we could pave over all of, uh, landscaping and then tear it back up again and now we've provided the green space. But as we've said from the beginning, um, in, in looking at this universally as a, as a, as a bylaw that's going to be applied to other situations down the road, I think setting a fair green space amount is a good planning tool by the town. What we can do on our site here is, is, is part of the special permit discussions. Um, but, um, my feeling is, my understanding is, is that we, we are at, um, uh, we cover the 200% as, as it sits now. Um, so.
Um, this is Barbara again. I was not asking the question because I want you to tear anything up and replant. I was asking because it pertains to my next question, which is how many additional spaces will you gain? The reason I was asking about the green space first is because I was concerned that if you had to add green space, that you might actually lose some parking spaces and then the, the amount of parking spaces you're gaining would go down. So that was why I was asking the question.
And that, and that, that was honestly a legit concern for us too. Um, I'm going to defer to Mike on that. I, I don't want to say the wrong number. I know he's been asked that before. So if Mike's on, online now.
Yep, uh, this is Mike Murray. We're looking, uh, at about 35 to 40 parking spaces additional.
Okay, so my, that, I actually don't have as much of a concern now that I understand you're not actually going to have to be putting green space in on the same piece of property where you might be losing parking when, you know, that was the whole purpose of doing this. That was the reason for my question. And that answers it. So, um, okay, I, I do not have any questions. Is there anyone else in the listening audience that has any questions or comments on this matter? This is a public hearing and anyone can comment. Staff, are we seeing anything?
No, everything is quiet here.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, I think we are probably ready to vote.
So I just want to mention, so y'all have three votes. Um, one on the definitions, which include both the zoning bylaw review as well as the definition for function facility. And then the second motion concerns Article Four and the, and the parking, um, for Article, the parking regulations in Article Seven. And then the third is the rezoning itself. So just to outline what you're about to vote. Starting on page nine.
So starting at Article 41?
No, go, go down further to Article 37, 38, motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recommend favorably on Articles 37 and 38, the petitions to amend the zoning bylaw, Article Two, definitions submitted by the zoning bylaw review committee and the Escudilla Realty Trust.
Second for Mike.
And I would add that we will, we will, um, adopt it as zoning bylaw review has submitted it with that extra sentence.
Um, before that, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Ernie.
Second. Thank you for saying that.
Why not?
Uh, would you, let, let me actually back up. Do you want to close the public hearing on Article 37 through 42 or do it individually?
I would like to close public hearing on all medicines. I think that was what we were discussing.
Okay, Article seven to 42.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ampemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Espio.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Raymond.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, all hearings closed.
Shall I make another motion favorably again?
Yes.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to recommend favorably on Articles 37 and 38, the petitions to amend the zoning bylaw, Article Two, definitions submitted by the zoning bylaw review committee and the Escudilla Realty Trust.
Second for Mike.
Chairman LaRue.
Except for Article 37 and 38 specifically, correct?
Yep, the definitions.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ampemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Espio.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Raymond.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport. Okay, then you're moving on to Articles 39 and 41 on the next page.
Madam Chair, this is Mike. I'd like to make a motion to recommend favorably on Articles 39 and 41, the petitions to amend the zoning bylaw, Article Four, use table in Article Seven, parking regulations submitted by Escudilla Realty Trust.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
No.
Vice Chairman Ampemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Espio.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Raymond.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport. Okay, now the last one is the rezoning itself.
Okay, um, that is 42, is that correct?
So someone needs to read the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend favorably on the petition to rezon property to the General Business District, one through three Ray Avenue.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Um, I'm, I want to make a comment and then I'm voting yes. Uh, my comment is, I voted no on the previous articles because I am worried about unintended consequences. However, if that passes, I do not object to this specific site being rezoned and taking advantage of that. So I am voting yes on this article.
Vice Chairman Ampemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Espio.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Raymond.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, that'll do it.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman, and I want to thank the staff too for a lot of time over the past few months and appreciate all the input. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
This was very difficult and, and I thank you for working so cooperatively with our whole team.
Enjoy the rest of the meeting.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Motion, item seven G and seven H together for discussion purposes.
Chairman LaRue.
Second.
Vice Chairman Ampem, oh, sorry, Chairman LaRue.
Brenda seconded, I say yes.
Member Clerk Espio.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Oh, yes.
Yes, I.
Member Raymond.
I didn't.
I got, okay. Uh, I got Vice Chairman Ampemba.
Oh, yes.
Uh, member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, this is Barbara again. Before I read these, I just want to clarify that these are indeed items G and H. They, they have different designations on page 12, but I just want to clarify it is item G and item H, correct? Is it for Parm, right?
Yeah. These are Parm.
So for some reason it says O and P on my copy, so we'll just read them the other way. So item seven G is a public hearing.
Great correction.
That's okay. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.6.10, restaurants of the zoning bylaws, 75 and 85 Middlesex Turnpike, Burlington Mall. Parm Burlington LLC is the applicant. And item seven H is a public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, 75 and 85 Middlesex Turnpike, Burlington Mall. Parm Burlington LLC is the applicant.
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record attorney, Mark Vaughn, uh, here tonight representing the applicant, uh, Parm Restaurant in connection, um, with these applications, uh, have Julia Hay, who was with Parm Restaurant, who's here, Garrett Singer, um, our architect, who, both of whom you met before, and I believe Jocelyn Gambon, the civil engineer, uh, as well. But, um, I know we, uh, had an opportunity at your last meeting to provide a pretty detailed presentation relative to Parm's intent to occupy space at the lower level of the, uh, the former Sears store, um, at the Burlington Mall. This would be what is the northwest corner of the lower level Sears, the corner facing, um, the Burlington Village Building, the former Tire Battery Auto Building. Um, and, um, Parm is a restaurant. Again, just for the board's, um, reminder of that a New York-based chef-driven Italian restaurant concept, uh, this would actually be their first location in Massachusetts and one that very, very excited about, um, the opportunity to locate here. So, um, I, I know we gave a pretty detailed presentation before. Uh, I don't think that there were a lot of, uh, any real lingering items, uh, but I do know the board, uh, felt that under the, the virtual, um, meeting format that you're in now, uh, that you would want to continue just in case there were any folks that didn't have an opportunity participate at the last meeting. I think, um, under the advice of Town Council, if I recall, but, um, so, uh, we really didn't have a presentation. Um, I know that, um, we presented before, um, you know, Kristin, um, thank you again for, you know, time you've taken in reviewing and commenting on this. We did provide, you know, the, uh, some information relative to odor control that I think, uh, sounds like you may have incorporated into a draft decision for the, the board's consideration. But, um, again, we're here to answer any questions, but we really didn't have a, much more of a presentation, if you would.
This is Barbara. Thank you, Mark. Um, Kristin, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Sure. Um, I don't really have too much. We're, we're all set. We have had some conversations with Parm, uh, opposite corner from Fogo de Chao, across from the new, um, Burlington Village. What is that, what are we calling it?
Yes.
Anyway, the, um, we, uh, we have a site plan as well as a special permit, um, for you, um, to, to vote on. I will note two conditions that we did add, um, just specifically, um, based on ongoing conversations as well as the, during this kind of state of emergency. Um, number 18, the planning board does not authorize valet parking or any designated tenant specific parking within the mall areas, parking areas. If the applicant or property would like to propose either of these for, um, would necessitate a future amendment to the site plan and/or special permit would be required. So that, that was in there, um, as well as, um, the very last item, uh, we talked about at the last meeting of do we really need to say anything about the fact we're approving the restaurant during a state of emergency? Um, I think it could go both ways. I mean, obviously, state and federal regulations trump what we're approving, but just to be safe, we put the applicant and property owner must comply with all federal and state laws and the planning board acknowledges that we are approving this application when the Commonwealth is under COVID-19 state of emergency. The applicant or property owner shall comply with any related COVID-19 regulations and requirements regarding operation seating and safety measures. Um, we, we write that, but I mean, overall, it's of course our hope that by the time this restaurant's up and running, this is way both, you know, behind us. So, you know, I, I hope that's the case and, you know, wish we didn't have to write, um, things like that. But other than that, we are all set. We do recommend, um, a vote. We do have a decision prepared for you and we did, um, make sure we allowed for this to be at least two meetings. So if anything came in between last meeting and this meeting, which it hasn't, so we are all set.
This is Barbara. Thank you, Kristin. Um, Joe, do you have anything you'd like to ask or comment on?
Nope, I'm all set.
Okay, Mike?
All set, thank you, Madam Chair.
Ernie?
All set, thank you, Madam Chair.
Paul?
I just wondered, uh, the DPW engineering said, see comments and also Board of Health, were those substantive things or just?
Um, so there are all the, Board of Health is all the typical restaurant comments. DPW is a lot of the utility comments. We did read them into the record at the last meeting, so I didn't put them in again. We don't, we have not received any new comments since the last meeting. Um.
Okay, thanks very much. That was just my question.
Yep.
I'm all set.
Thank you, Paul. Um, Bill?
No further comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Brenda?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, um, this is Barbara. I also do not have any comments. I, I would like to move this forward. I have one quick question to, I'm curious to know when you think you'll be able to open.
Julia, if, if you're on, uh, maybe you could take a shot at that, or Garrett?
Um, yeah, so I think we're, you know, progressing, um, based on our original schedule, which is, um, late fourth quarter, early first quarter of 2021. Um, but again, I think a lot of this is depending on where things are moving. Um, but we're certainly still working on our edge, um, to open based on our original schedule.
This is Barbara again. Thank you so much. Well, we're looking forward to having you. It sounds like it'll be a very nice addition. So, um, if I may have a motion?
Madam Chair, this is Paul. I make a motion to close the public hearing on these matters.
Second for Mike.
Uh, roll call vote, Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ampemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Espio.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Raymond.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Okay, um.
Do you want a motion on the, to approve the request of?
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair, I make a motion to request of Palm Burlington LLC for a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.6.10, restaurants of the zoning bylaw to allow the operation of full-service restaurant at 75 Middlesex Turnpike, Burlington Mall, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit A.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ampemba.
Yes.
And Member Clerk Espio.
Second and yes.
Uh, thanks. Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Raymond.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
On the site plan, I make a motion to approve the request for approval of site plan application for Palm Fund Burlington LLC for properties located at 75 Middlesex Turnpike, Burlington, Mass, to permit the restaurant to use with internal, restaurant use with internal and external season patio seating. Our site plan modifications include the designation of a partially enclosed patio area, uh, relocated access eager stores, including the primary entrance vestibule and building facade enhancements, including awnings as reflected on the red line site plan entitled Proposed Palm Restaurant, 5 Burlington Mall Road, 11,000, 1,000, 1,000 Middlesex Turnpike, Burlington, Massachusetts, prepared by Vesan and Brussels, as dated, uh, architecture and design consisting of five pages reflecting the proposed 5,692 plus minus square foot tenant space with 120 interior, 46 patio dining seats, subject to foreign terms, original terms and conditions, uh, as amended.
Second for Mike.
Thank you. Roll call?
Oh, sorry. Um, Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ampemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Espio.
Yes.
Member Raymond, uh, Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Raymond.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
All set with Parm.
Welcome.
Welcome, good luck.
Thank you so much.
Great success.
We're excited.
Uh, this is Barbara again. We are now on page 18.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take.
Go ahead, somebody else was going.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I make a motion to take I, seven, I, J, K, and L together for discussion purposes.
Chairman LaRue?
Second the motion.
Thank you, Brenda.
Vice Chairman Impemba?
Yes.
Member Clerk Aspeo?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Raymond?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This is Barbara again. Item 7I is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special pursuant to section 4.3.2.22, drive-through of the zoning bylaws, 150 Lexington Street, Arista Development LLC Incorporated is the applicant. And item 7J is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.4.1.11, discharges from man-made structures into the wetlands of the zoning bylaws, 150 Lexington Street, Arista Development LLC is the applicant. Item 7K is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 6.1.2.1, non-conforming structures and premises of the zoning bylaws, 150 Lexington Street, Arista Development LLC Incorporated is the applicant. And item 7L is a public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, 150 Lexington Street, Arista Development LLC is the applicant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening again. For the record attorney, Mark Vaughn with Reemer Broadstein, representing the applicant in connection with this application. We have the same folks participating tonight as we did at the initial public hearing a couple of weeks ago. The representatives of Citizens Bank, Samantha Bergner and Amanda Marshall, along with their development partner, Doug Benoit. We have our architect, Bill Lorigan, and our civil engineer, Phil Henry, and also our traffic engineer as well as part of the, the team here tonight. So again, I know at the first hearing that we had a couple of weeks ago, we did give a pretty thorough and detailed presentation about what the project involves. And again, we're talking about a construction of a very, you know, modestly sized retail bank facility for Citizens Bank, be a 2,700 square foot building that will be located in the outer reaches of the Kohl's parking lot near Lexington Street. I know we spoke a lot at that prior meeting about the abundance of parking that's out there from a practical perspective in terms of having more parking than what is needed for Kohl's' operation. And, you know, we have our traffic engineer, Ron Mueller, that's actually done a parking inventory analysis as well that he could speak to tonight if the board wants to hear that. And I think that, you know, some of the feedback that we got at the first meeting, what I thought we might do, just make the most efficient use of time, is I think one of the items was the building design itself. There seemed to be a lot of discussion about the contemporary design versus perhaps something that would be more colonial in appearance. So I know our team, you know, took to heart those comments. I think there was a mix of opinion, to be honest with you, amongst the, the board and some members of the public, but I think what we have tried to do is really take a, a serious effort of incorporating colonial elements into that building that would address the feedback that we heard. So what I thought, just from a flow perspective, is we could submit those revised renderings to the board. So you should have those. I know that they're on the town's website. I was going to ask if maybe Bill Lorigan could, you know, briefly walk through those plans. Then also Phil Henry, our civil engineer, we did submit some revised site plans that reflect some comments and feedback that we received, as well as updated through last week's conversations with the Conservation Commission. Again, Conservation Commission has some pretty broad jurisdiction here, just given the Vine Brook is right next, right off of the, the parking lot. So then maybe we could, you know, have him present those plans and then if, if time allows, I could have Ron Mueller, our traffic engineer, just talk about the traffic and the, the parking inventory analysis that was done. So if that's okay with you, I, I maybe turn it over to Bill, our architect.
Yes, please.
I'm on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Hello.
Okay. Yeah, I was, okay. Good evening. This is Bill Lorigan, and there was some discussion two weeks ago about our contemporary-looking building that some of the board members felt that it wasn't really appropriate for the area, that it was a gateway to residential area. And so we went back to the drawing boards to see what we could come up with that might be more appropriate for a gateway to a residential area. And so I looked at the contemporary work that we did and tried to incorporate some of the items that I think that would be more appropriate for a New England-style building. I've added gable roofs with dormers and shingles. We have slab boards on all four sides of the building, windows that are human-scaled and that are, you can actually look through on all four sides of the building. So the, the situation of if you're in the back of the building, it really doesn't look like the back of the building because there's going to be activity within the building. There are office spaces on the other side of that glass, there are going to be people in there and there's going to be light and activity on all four sides of the building. I'm trying to think of other things that we have introduced here. The entrance vestibule is accessible on the front of the building and on the side of the building. That has the ATM in it, so, you know, patrons can go walk in there in the evening when the bank is closed. It's all well-lit. And then there again, the front of the building also has a large set of windows that are all trimmed out in a colonial manner, that you can see activity inside of the building again. So let's see what else we did. Oh, and there was some, some conversations about the dumpster enclosure being out in the middle of the parking lot. And we looked at that again and decided that it would be better if we incorporated it with the building itself. So if you look at the rear elevation, to the left on the rear elevation is a small trash enclosure that will be locked, it can be opened up, and they can wheel out a couple small trashing, you know, trash receptacles. Let's see what else here. I believe that's, I believe that sums up our building. Any questions, please?
This is Barbara. Thank you. Just, I think we should probably hear, well, you know what? No, this was a big issue. Let's just go through the architecture first, because I, I think we can handle that separately, if that's okay with everyone. Joe, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Uh, just, just want to know, like, I, it's hard for me to make out on the plans which, you know, which is the view from, someone can point out, the view from the Mall Road.
The Mall Road is, it says, on my elevation, it says Burlington Mall Road elevation.
It's the one on the top, Joe.
On the top. That faces Mall Road, correct. And the one down towards the, in the middle to the right is the one that's facing Lexington Street.
Okay, so that's facing Lexington Street. So it's funny that there's, there's no sign. The sign is going to be on Lexington Street, not on the Mall Road.
Yes, there's a small sign over the building entrance.
Is that illuminated? Sorry, Joe, to jump in, I just, we're talking about the sign.
I don't, I don't see, I only see one sign.
On Burlington Mall Road elevation?
It's above the doors, Joe.
Above the doors, there's a, there's a little eyebrow, and then above that.
Joe, what channel is B cat?
So by, from my view of this thing, it looks like the Mall Road side, sort of the Mall, sort of, I'm sorry, Lexington Street side is the middle right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the only one I see the Citizens Bank sign on, and I see it, and it doesn't look like it's over any entranceway.
If you look at the elevation at the top of the sheet?
Ready to zoom to the, the, above the door?
It's above the awning, Joe. Like, when you first walk in, you see the two little people next to, I think it's like a 1986 Cutlass.
Yeah, I'll take your word for it. I don't, I don't see it.
Joe, it should pop up.
We're trying to zoom in.
The bottom has a, so there's a red car and there's a blue car.
That's the rear of the building.
The one at the top of the page, Joe, where it just has the blue car in the left.
The top one has a blue car.
Right.
The top one has a blue.
Above the doors.
Okay, so I, I see what you're saying. It's on the glass. I can't, I can't make that out from the view I'm looking at, but.
Yeah, and the letters are white, so it's a little hard to see, whereas the, you know, the, the other sign is green, so it's not standing out, but it's, it's white letters that are like right over that awning-like structure above the doors.
Okay. Yeah, so my, my big concern was, and it looks like, I mean, if, you know, at least from the perspective of the, of the two streets, Lexington Street and the Mall Road, that, you know, we had somewhat of a front-looking side, and I think those, you know, I, you know, I mean, they're, they're, you know, they're a fair look as far as I'm concerned. I mean, I'm, you know, I know we don't have design review, but, you know, it's got, it certainly has some colonial features to it. It's, in my opinion, better than the design that was there previously, so.
Okay.
Is that, Barbara, you only want comments on the design right now?
Right now, we're just doing design, yeah. Thank you. Um, Mike, did you have anything you wanted to say about the design?
No, we don't have designer view, so I have no comment on the design.
Ernie?
Uh, even though we don't have designer view, I agree with Joe in this case.
Okay. Paul?
Hello?
Hi.
We can hear you, I think.
Nope.
Hi. This is Paul. No comment.
Okay, thank you. Bill?
Uh, thank you, Barbara. No, Joe, I think he said it all. Thank you.
Brenda?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
And this is Barbara. I think it looks nice. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Okay. So please, Mark, go ahead with the next step.
Yeah, so if I could, Brady or whoever's the, the gatekeeper of the, of the screen here, I guess if, if you wouldn't mind maybe pulling up the revised site plans that were submitted, and maybe I could turn it over to Phil Henry, our civil engineer, to just walk you through some of the changes that were made and why, so.
Sure.
Do you have a sheet that you'd prefer to get to?
Yep, yeah, this is Phil Henry with Civil Design Group. Why don't we start on sheet four, which is one down from that one right there?
Is that the one you'd like?
Yep, yeah, we can start on that. We should probably go in, in the order in which the page were presented.
Yep.
Yeah, so that's sheet 2.3, so you can, sheet four of the plan set, so it's, I think you had it, I think it was sheet seven of the, page seven, I guess.
Or the next one?
Yeah, next one.
I'm sorry. All right.
Yep, that one.
Okay.
That's too far. Yeah, so when I, when I refer to the sheet numbers there, it's, it's not the actual page numbers of the PDF, it's the bottom right corner of each sheet.
Yeah, so this is the one you want, right?
Right here.
Yeah.
Sheet four, yep.
Yep, okay, perfect.
Okay. I think this is sheet five. This is the site plan.
Hold on one second.
Yeah, so while that's bringing up, I can just give some context. So, so when we were in front of you, yep, that's the sheet right there.
Perfect.
When we were in front of you, the board, last time, we had incorporated some modifications from Conservation, and, and the plan set that we submitted today is a result of not only getting feedback from, from this board, but also the other commission as well. So I guess what I'd like to go through is itemize each of the plan changes that we have done. So starting on sheet four, which is this overall plan sheet here, we had added a note indicating that all the trash shall be cleaned up along the bank, and that is highlighted in that gray hatch, as you see on that plan there. So we've committed to either machine or hand picking up all the trash and debris on that hill and even into, within the water's edge. There's a, there's a bunch of debris actually in the water itself. So that was, that was one thing that we added. We also coordinated snow storage with the existing facility as well. We didn't want to show what snow storage areas that are, are, don't align with the optimization of, of, of how they manage snow today. So there is four snow storage areas shown on the plan, and if you, and they're labeled as such, starting from south to north, going back towards the river. If we can jump to sheet five. The, one of the items that we had removed and relocated was the trash dumpster, which is, which was once in that pie-shaped island northwest of the bank, which is now a landscape island. We had, we had reduced the trash enclosure in size, and we had shifted it to the northeast side of the building, which is the right side of the building, and it's much smaller in size. And as you can see there, there's a, there's a leader that says trash enclosure. We also committed to relocating the, the four-foot-high chain-link fence that runs along the north side. If you're looking at the, at this sheet here, it's right behind 12 parking spaces on the north side. Yep, right, exactly, right there. And we also committed to extending that chain-link fence all the way down Lexington, all the way down, intersecting with our Lexington Street access driveway, which is just off locus of this viewport here. We also had a comment related to the, the crosswalk, from this board actually, related to the crosswalk at the, at the ATM drive-through. We had added some pedestrian signs just upstream, if you will, of, of that crosswalk. So if you pan down just a, just a little bit, Brady, the, well, you'll see that there's two pedestrian signs bookending the crosswalk with arrows pointing down. So the, the sign legend is, is just off to the right, so if someone's looking at a PDF version, it's, it's just off to the right. So to make, you know, to, to further, to further highlight that there is crosswalk and there's pedestrian activity. Yep, yeah, so if you keep going down, you'll, you'll start to see the pedestrian sign and the arrow as well. And then we can jump to, let's jump to the landscape plan, Brady, which is sheet eight, which is three sheets down from, from this one. I'll skip over the utility plan. The utility plan, we just modified some utility locations per the architectural building, and we had added the sewer flows, which I believe, which was a comment from, from DPW. But the landscape plan, I could, I guess I want to focus on this. I think there was a, someone had asked last time that to, that we really wanted to focus on this. So, so basically, what we were able to do with, with this new layout was, was increase the overall landscape area of the site. was increase the overall landscape area of the site by eighty-five hundred square feet, give or take. Um, and most of that eighty-five hundred square feet is, is focused on the east side, uh, addition to the new project. However, there, we, we did introduce um, small landscape islands west of this, west of our, of the new construction. If you can just pan left, Brady, you'll see, uh, you'll see the landscape islands as you enter the site through the main entrance on Mall. Uh, all of the trees out to, to be red maples, so they all match, uh, within the property for the, for the new vegetation. Uh, and all the fifty red maples, uh, there's five arborvitae surrounding the backside of the remote ATM, and there is overall three hundred and thirty, uh, shrubs and ground cover and grasses that are, are, are spread throughout the site. And then obviously you have your seeded lawn, uh, and then we actually added a, a naturalized grass towards the north side of the property, um, just to revegetate that contiguous riverfront area behind those twelve space. Uh, right, yeah, if you just, yeah, right there, that triangular area there is all now na- naturalized grass, so that's going to be seeded and, and, and let revegetated naturally.
Um, I'm sorry, this is Barbara. Can I just ask a quick question while you're going through this, since you're talking about trees?
Sure.
What is happening to the trees that are there already? There are a lot of flowering trees already there.
Yes. Yep, so I was, I was just gonna, I was just gonna focus on the, I guess, the intersection of Lexington and, and Burlington Mall Road. So, um, as you had alluded to, uh, there is, uh, at the true intersection of, of Lexington and Mall Road, there are are six trees currently, that are currently blooming. Uh, those are proposed to remain. Um, and we, because we've increased much of that landscaped area focused at Lexington Street Access, we were able to add four additional trees. Uh, so, and what, and what, what our, um, what we tried to achieve was to interlace the new trees with the existing trees. So if we're staying across the street, you would see the red maples with the existing trees kind of alternating. However, if you're coming down Lexington Street from the east, traveling west, I mean, looking at the site, it almost looked like, uh, at the angle at which you're approaching, it don't, it would almost look like an opaque vegetation because of the angle at which the trees are located. Um, so as you could see, the, on, on this plan here, the, the existing trees are the, are the light gray, uh, symbols that are close to the sidewalk, and then the new trees are, are interlaced behind them and, and alternating, um, so that you get that effect as you're traveling westbound from, from Lexington Street. So besides the trees, in that particular area, uh, we're adding seventy new, new plantings comprised of grasses. Uh, we had, we've added some blue iris, um, and some bayberries, just to get some yellow and blue, and then obviously with the red maple, and then the grasses obviously were, are green. So, you know, we think we achieved a, a good array of, of, um, blooms and, and vegetation to both higher story and, and lower story. And the, the overall depth of this vegetation, um, as you could see, it, it, it varies as you travel from Lexington Street back to the bank building, but at its, at its deepest point, you're looking at about fifty feet, uh, right at the Lexington Street Access, and then it, 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 um, tapers down to about five feet, and then as you go towards the, the new sidewalk connection, it goes back out to about twenty-five or thirty feet. And then as you cross that drive aisle visually, across the, the ATM visually, as you can see, we have two triangular areas that we, uh, that are vegetated as well. So, um, you know, we, we were able to, to create some nice vegetation areas in and around, you know, this layout. Um, the, go ahead.
This is Barbara. Are there any trees that are going to be removed?
Yes, uh, there are a number of trees that are going to be removed internal to the, the drive aisle. So for instance, uh, Brady, if you just pan up ever so slightly, the, the, there is a, a landscaped, um, area just to the left of the building, across the drive aisle, that, that once, or, or currently extends right across what would be the backside of the building's sidewalk. I, I believe there was one or two trees in there, but our, our goal was to, to net an increase of trees overall, and we, we've done that.
I, I understand that, and I appreciate that. Um, I am questioning, is there anything that can be done with those trees? Could they be transplanted elsewhere on the site? I just hate to see them, you know, tossed aside.
Yeah, I think, I think physically they could be transplanted. I, I think logistically, it's, it's a, it's, it's, I, it's, they would have to be transplanted immediately, so to speak, and not, and not stored and, and relocated proximate to the, um, proximate to the construction. But, um, you know, I guess I'll let others, uh, opine in, but I think that can fit, can physically be done, so long as that transplant occurs outside of the limit of work.
I understand, and, and I can't really say where it could go, but I would like it if you all could consider where you might be able to transplant those trees, where they would be able to not, you know, be out of the way of construction, but, you know, still give them a chance to keep going.
Sure. I think, I think that's reasonable. And that's it. That concludes, yeah, that concludes all of our, uh, all of our minor changes. All the other changes that have been incorporated, we mentioned at our prior hearing, but I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions about any part of the project.
This is Barbara, thank you. Um, is there anything else we needed to review before I turn this over to the board for questions? Kristen?
So Barbara, I, um, well, I, I let, well, I'll say something first. Um, so one of the other things that we wanted to, and I think Mark's probably gonna say the same thing, um, wanted to talk about at this meeting, because we didn't get a chance to go through it very much at the last meeting, was there were kind of questions about parking count, parking utilization. I think we all can agree that there's a lot of empty spaces in this parking lot, um, from a zoning perspective, as well as a Section Six perspective, and then an actual use perspective. Um, and I don't know, Mark, if that's where you wanted to go, but I think it's, um, important if we can walk through that a little bit in terms of understanding that dynamic, um, and then certainly get into, into questions.
Uh, sure, be happy to, um, so.
Was that what you were?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think, um, yeah, I, I think I could maybe just say something briefly, then, then segue to, into Ron, uh, Mueller, to maybe talk about the parking inventory analysis that was done, to just provide comfort that, you know, there's sufficient parking, including factoring parking with the, uh, Islamic church utilization there. But, uh, yeah, to Kristen's point, there are existing non-conformities with respect to the site. The Coles Building itself, um, is, uh, violates, a, a setback violation with respect to Meadow Road. Uh, if you travel along Meadow Road, and you, you'll see that Coles Building sits pretty close to the road. So there's a, there's some existing non-conformity. I think open space is, is non-conforming as well, although we're significantly increasing open space on the site, bringing that more into conformance. And as it relates to parking, I mean, the site, uh, believe it or not, is currently, um, you know, underparked from a zoning perspective. When the Coles Building was approved back in two thousand and one, you know, if you look at what the, the parking requirement is for that building, a hundred and two thousand eight one, eight, eight hundred nineteen square feet, you know, it, um, it was listed as being all retail, so if you do a, you know, the, the four per thousand for retail comes out to, uh, four hundred and twelve parking spaces required, and there's three hundred and eighty-four that are on the property. Um, I know that may sound surprising to a lot of people, that there's actually less parking than what the zoning requires based upon the utilization of it, but.
But that was the calculation from the Coles, assuming Coles is a hundred percent retail, which we all know retail is, is not.
Yeah, and just going into that. I think that in, information that, you know, uh, uh, citizens has received from calls in terms of, you know, how the, the, the space inside, you know, is actually broken down for, you know, storage and, you know, non-retail space, whether it's dressing rooms, you know, locker rooms, uh, you know, things of that nature. Uh, it's about a, you know, nineteen percent, you know, um, nineteen percent of the, the overall square footage is, is considered non-retail. So, um, if you, if you, you know, factor that in, you know, even with the bank use and the, you know, reducing some parking for the, the bank building, um, we'd still be non-conforming, but, um, our analysis is that it would only be about sixteen spaces, you know, short of what the, you know, requirement would be. So, if, I guess it would be, you know, more, more conforming than, you know, if you looked at it from the all-retail perspective, which is, you know, what the approved site plan, um, shows it at. But, uh, I guess, you know, probably more importantly, right, is that, alright, well, what, what's the reality of it in terms of parking need and utilization? And, you know, I know Ron, uh, Mueller, hopefully you're on Ron, but, um, maybe you could just talk about that analysis that was done, and then, uh, maybe just briefly touch upon the, the traffic analysis too, to provide comfort that that was, was looked at appropriately.
Sure, I can do that. Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Um, my name is Ron Mueller, Principal with Ron Mueller and Associates, and, uh, the traffic consultant for the project. Um, as you know, we submitted, and we prepared and submitted a full traffic impact and access study. Uh, that basically provides, uh, really two basic pieces of information. Uh, one is what are the traffic impacts of the project on the driveways and the surrounding streets? And the other is, uh, whether or not the so proposed supply of parking spaces onsite will be sufficient to meet demand. Uh, just very briefly on the traffic impacts, uh, obviously based, the traffic, uh, which shows us that this bank will generate somewhere between fifty-five and seventy-one trips during the peak hours, its total of both entering and exiting traffic. Uh, at the request of staff, we've also looked at how much of the traffic does the existing, uh, Citizens Bank branch located at Forty Mall Road generate? Uh, and using some transaction data, because obviously we can't do any counts right now, um, we were able to calculate what the existing trips there are, and those range from thirty-eight to fifty-eight peak hours. Uh, so obviously, uh, the traffic analysis assumes a much higher generation than what we will expect will actually happen. Um, also interesting to note that the existing Forty Mall Road bank is quite a bit larger than what is being proposed here. Um, the impact of that traffic is essentially that um, all of the driveways and surrounding intersections can easily accommodate that additional traffic without any change in the level of service. Um, what, we've also made a number of recommendations, uh, in the traffic study with regard to the internal site circulation, um, site lines at the driveways, uh, removal of some existing vegetation to improve those site lines, and all of those recommendations have been incorporated on the site plan that is before you. With regard to parking, we did, uh, parking demand counts, uh, on two Fridays and two Saturdays back in October of last year, where we essentially counted how many cars are parked in the lot every fifteen minutes. Uh, and we essentially did that from, uh, twelve noon on Fridays to five PM, um, and on Saturdays from eleven AM to one PM. Reason for those hours is that those are the hours when both existing Coles traffic and the bank traffic will generate at, at its highest rate. Uh, what we found is that out of the three hundred and forty-seven parking spaces that will remain onsite after the bank is constructed, Coles currently occupies a hundred and twenty-six spaces. Um, and based on ITE parking demand projections for the bank, um, we expect that the bank will occupy about ten spaces. So there'll be a demand, um, of about a hundred, a hundred and thirty-six spaces, or about forty percent of the supply for, uh, of, of the spaces onsite. Now, that obviously is an average month condition. Um, we all recognize that retail establishments require much higher parking demands during the Christmas holiday season. Uh, so again, based on ITE projections for, uh, demand, which is, they project actually fifty-seven percent higher demand for parking during the holiday shopping season, would result in a total demand for parking onsite of two hundred and eight spaces, or about sixty percent of the supply of spaces that will remain onsite. Now, to Mark's point, uh, we all recognize that the Islamic Center right now parks a lot of their vehicles onsite. Actually, that happens roughly between one and two PM on Fridays. Um, and we specifically counted how many, uh, people parked onsite and then walked over to the Islamic Center, and that, we found, was a hundred and thirty-four spaces, quite a big amount of demand for parking that is arguably illegally used by the Islamic Center right now. Uh, yeah, and illegal may be a strong word, but I don't believe they have any agreement with Coles or the property owner to utilize those spaces. But even if you include those, that demand for the Islamic Center within those numbers results in an average month demand of two hundred and sixty-six spaces, or about seventy-seven percent of the supply, um, versus a peak December month demand of three hundred and thirty-six spaces, or ninety-seven percent of it. Well, under any of these scenarios, even if you continue to allow the Islamic Center to park there, um, there will be inadequate supply of parking spaces after development of the bank. That wraps up what I have to say, unless you have specific comments about the traffic study I can go over with you.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question? This is Mike.
Of course, please do, Mike.
Thank you, Ron. Did you say that on Fridays between one and two, the Islamic Center has a hundred and thirty-six cars there?
Cor- a hundred and thirty-four, correct.
That's every Friday?
I'm assuming whenever they have, uh, particular service, uh, services, um, but yes, that's the first Friday that we observed parking demand, we weren't aware of this happening and didn't separate out the demand count, so we went back out on our second Friday, uh, and specifically kept track of Islamic Center's parking.
Well, that sounds like that'd be problematic, because that's kind of like prime time for the bank, right?
Well, as I said, um, even with the Islamic Center on a Friday, actually, the prime time for the bank happened more around, uh, four to five o'clock. Um, that's when a lot of people will go cash their checks, uh, and things like that. Um, regardless, and during any of these time periods, we have inadequate supply of parking even with the Islamic Center.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mike. Um, all right, Kristen, did you have anything you wanted to say about the parking calculations before I turn it over to the board? Okay, let's turn it over to the board.
Kristen is muted.
Uh, Kristen's on mute, yeah.
She may, maybe she had to step away.
Oh, I see your lips moving.
No, I'm here. I just, I'm not usually on mute, so. Uh, no, I just think the importance of recalculating to understand what the actual usage is in this parking lot, because the numbers really haven't matched what, what happened there is important. Um, you know, I think we, I want to keep an eye on in terms of when we get to a decision time, just kind of to Mike's point of just the Islamic Center. And I, I know that, you know, you guys and the property owner allow the Islamic Center to use your site for overflow, and there's not really a formal agreement. So I think there's something we could work out to try to accommodate um, all users, but, um, and just appreciate the property owner allowing for them to use, use the site as they have been. Um, but, uh, anyway, overall, I appreciate the applicant having gone through the exercise that we asked them to do to do this analysis, so we really under, can understand better what's going on.
Thank you, Kristen. This is Barbara again. Joe, did you have any questions or comments on either the landscaping plan or this parking analysis?
Um, so the landscaping, I would like to see some renderings of the landscaping. I, I, you know, it's hard to, it looks like there's sufficient landscaping, but it's hard to tell unless we see some sort of rendering of it, um, existing, and then the one that will, you know, picture of the existing, and then, uh, you know, a rendering of what there will be. Um, I would like to see that. Um, another thing I'd like to see is there is a walkway, I assume that there's a walkway, um, on the Mall Road and on the Lexington Street, right, a sidewalk, or? Is that correct?
Yeah, uh, yes, there is. Yes. Uh, sidewalks on both Mall Road and, uh, Lexington Street on the, um, the, the, you know, the, the side of Lexington where our site is. Actually, yeah.
So there's a, so there's a walkway between this site and the, um, the uh and the temple of the the Islamic Center.
Yeah, there is. Um I think that, you know, off of us, for the the entirety of our site frontage and Phil, correct me if I'm wrong or Doug, um but I believe that the entirety of our site frontage, the sidewalk, um there's some form of a um I don't know if it's a town utility or or something further down uh before you get to the Islamic Center where there's a little bit of a gap there, but then the sidewalk picks up again. Is that right, Phil?
Yeah, there's our the sidewalk on Lexington Lexington Street extends to the pump station.
Yeah.
Then which and the pump station i- is essentially where the Islamic access drive is maybe short about thirty feet or so. Um there appears to be room to to walk in between them, between the pump station and the Islamic uh driveway, but there's no actual defined sidewalk. There's a guardrail, but there's actually sidewalk on the south side of Lexington Street as well.
Yeah, the south side, yeah. But so I guess one of my concerns is that is it has really not a lot as much to do with you as it does the Islamic Center. You know, that there's proper walkways between where they're parking the cars and and the Islamic Center itself, number one. I'm more concerned about I I think the parking is sufficient. I don't I don't think it's going to be an issue with the parking as as much as my concern would be the traffic. So, you know, when you're parking cars, when there's a hundred and thirty-two or a hundred and thirty-four cars, as you said, being parked over there on a Friday, and you know, we've got the traffic of Kohl's already, and then we're throwing the traffic in of this. Um it's that's that's more of a congestion issue and a safety issue. Um you know, with a hundred and thirty-four cars, I don't know if you you can count at least one person per car, maybe two people per car. That's how many people are going to be walking in that area. Um and then you've you're adding the additional traffic of this, you know, to that whole mix. Um that's one of my concerns. The other one is the walkway that's out there, I'm wondering if we can get some lighting out there on the walkway, you know, maybe uh some antique lanterns, you know, lining the walkway so we can at least have some lighting down in that area, you know, of Mall Road and Lexington Street. Um you know, at least as far as your property, Kohl's property goes down there. Um that would be something I would be interested in in seeing. Um and the renderings. So if we're talking, you know, we're talking about the landscape at this point and the parking, parking, I don't see as much of an issue, only and it's going to create congestion for the traffic flow. Um and maybe maybe safe, right? And I want to see where they, you know, where they're parking and how they're walking from the cars because that in that, all those cars are coming at one time. You know, in other words, it's it's almost like a, well, it's it's equivalent of church, you know, starting and church getting out. We all know, you know, been around churches when they when they start and when they get out, and there's literally, you know, just a flood of people coming in those. I want to make sure that, you know, there's safe travel and walking from those people uh from their cars to the Islamic Center if there's additional traffic put right into that general vicinity. So that's kind of one of the things I want to take really take a good look at before I am a hundred percent comfortable with that.
Okay, this is Barbara. Thank you, Joe. Um Mike, did you have any other questions?
Um thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple, and generally, as we sit tonight, I'm opposed to a bank in this spot. I just don't think it works. But I'm going to try and and work through them. I think Fridays one to two are going to be a real issue. I have been down Lexington Street when they're having one of those events at the Islamic Center, and there's even like a police detail uh for some of those events. It's it's it gets very busy and very congested. And um I agree that the parking's not an issue, but I think the congestion is definitely going to be an issue, and it's just a dangerous site to begin with with the the cut-throughs. Um another issue I have is I didn't even realize until Madam Chair, you brought it up in the last meeting. I'm still not comfortable with that crosswalk in the middle of the uh the drive-through lane. I just feel like that's a real safety hazard, even with with uh the signs there. I mean, I think you almost need like, I don't know, but that's really going to be, I mean, someone's going to get hit there. When you're going to the A T M, you don't really think that you're going to have crossing traffic in the lane behind the bank. And I went over to the site and saw that. I see why you put the crosswalk there is because it it lines right up with the crosswalk out on Lexington Street, and that's an extension of it. So I think that's a real issue that that's got to be worked through here. That I'm definitely not comfortable with with that uh crosswalk there. That's all I have this by Madam Chair.
This is Barbara. Thank you, Mike. Um Ernie.
Yeah, thank you. Uh I think I'm on mute. Yes. A a question for the traffic engineer first. Uh so correct me if I'm wrong, but you say there is more parking than you need on the site?
Correct.
How much more parking than you need? And is is it? Is it all the time or only when the Islamic Center is not parking there?
So there is more than adequate parking with or without the Islamic Center there. Uh on an average month condition, uh the peak demand for the site is a hundred and thirty-six spaces out of three hundred and forty-seven provided onsite. So that's a demand of forty percent of the supply. Um during peak December month shopping season conditions, the peak demand is two hundred and eight spaces or a demand of sixty percent of the supply.
Okay. Uh then I have a question for you uh or for you and the and the uh several or the architect. Is it possible since you're going to be doing a lot of uh appears you're going to be doing a lot of new paving and even maybe even some regrading in that area? Is it possible to leave some of to permit the parking but not construct it? In other words, to leave some of the parking uh maybe along the Mall Road or someplace like that in a uh pervious state, you know, vegetated state? Uh and if if you need it in the future, just pave it because uh if if you don't need all the parkings, if you it looks like your parking demand is only only sixty to seventy percent of of uh what's there now. So do you want to pay all that even though you don't need it?
Well, um if I could address that, uh it really um gets also into the issue of whether or not the board wants to continue to allow the Islamic Center to park on the site. Um I mean, I hear a lot of
I I don't I I excuse me for a minute, but I don't think that's our decision. Well, we allow the Islamic uh Temple of the mosque to park on the site. I think it's more the landowner's decision. I and I that's to get to my other point, too. I don't want to penalize him. Penalize the owner for allowing that to happen either by making sure that this particular owner constructs a sidewalk or any other safety considerations. In other words, if he's a nice guy and allows people to park there, I I don't think we want to penalize him for doing that or make him spend additional money. But that that wasn't the point of my first point was that if if the parking isn't needed.
Right, but to to your point on that.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. To your point on that, uh if the Islamic Center is continued to allow to park there and then coupled with a peak December condition, we're projecting uh that the parking demand will be at ninety-seven percent.
Okay, that answers my question. I'm sorry. I didn't follow that the first time. Um.
And Ernie, could I just make maybe make one point? I'm not sure if this came across the first meeting or not, but we are adding a significant amount of green space uh to the site.
I understand.
About eighty-five hundred square feet, which, you know, if you consider every parking, average parking stall is like ten by twenty. So it it's basically the equivalent of like forty-three
Right.
parking stalls of additional, you know, green space. So um which I think will make a nice improvement.
Okay, I'm I wasn't trying to take away any of the parking. I was just trying to actually let the plan show it as parking, but show it as uh reserved parking. Okay, so but that issue is not there if if you're up to ninety-something percent of the available parking used in the December months. Uh the other thing on the on Mike's point about the about the crosswalk across uh that crosses the drive-through, is it possible to raise that a little bit or even raise an area in front of it so that uh the traffic slows down or knows there could possibly be people crossing?
So that that was actually something that I was just going to uh suggest that we look into as well. Because I mean, while a one, I don't anticipate that we would have a lot of pedestrians uh walking to the bank. Um and uh but regard and so but regardless, so that's why we proposed to not just stripe a crosswalk across that area, but also install pedestrian crossing signs there to highlight the fact that there are or could be pedestrians crossing there. It really is not any different than a crosswalk you see across regular two-lane roads, except in this condition, you only it's a one-way street, so it will be even that much safer. Pedestrians only have to look uh towards one direction uh for any conflicting traffic. I honestly don't see that this is going to be a a big safety issue. But um there are things that can be done to further highlight the fact that there is a crosswalk there, which would be what's referred to as a raised crosswalk. It's kind of like a speed table almost where you have maybe a three-inch reveal uh higher elevation so that it it again draws attention to the fact that there is a crosswalk there.
Okay, that that might be something you should look at. And also, uh I think it probably falls under landscaping because it's on the islands, I I I had raised the point at the last meeting about vertical granite curbing where the concrete was not cast with the sidewalk. Has that been addressed or do you agree to do that? Looks like you might have even a few less islands than you had before, so.
Yeah, this is Phil Henry. Uh as we stated last um hearing, we we all curb replacement was like in con. So so this site has uh vertical granite and precast. Where there was vertical granite granite, we we replaced as such or granite uh material, and then where there was precast, we we kept it as new precast to to maintain the material.
And how and all the new islands are vertical granite? The new islands?
No, the 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 granite is is along the the outside of of the parking lot as a whole. Just actually, and at the entrances.
Okay, but uh I think I would like to see uh the granite at least in in the newly constructed islands. If you if you want to continue something that's already there in precast concrete, okay, I mean, eventually you're going to have to replace it, but the the new uh the new islands that are going to be constructed, I think should be vertical granite. That's my opinion. I'm all set, Madam Chair.
This is Barbara. Thank you, Ernie. Um next up is Paul, but before you start, I'm going to myself because my laptop is about to die and I need to go get my charger. So carry on without me. I'll be right back. Go ahead, Paul.
You're gonna miss my comments, Barbara? Yes, no, I'm I'm looking at this and I'm thinking, you remember when Yogi Berra, they were going to go someplace and Yogi Berra says, oh, no, we're not going to go there. He says, it's so crowded that nobody goes there anymore. And I'm thinking of how, you know, I look at that and I said, gee, this is pretty tight and it could be pretty crowded. But, you know, I don't go to the bank anymore. I mean, I the only time I go is there's a an A T M there. But uh you know, so much of banking has gone onto the internet and so forth now that I I question, you know, how much how much uh traffic there is and how much this is going to be used. Uh uh because I initially looked at it, said, gee, look, that's a congested site. And I get down there almost every morning during the winter when the weather is bad uh to go down Lexington Street and go across so I can walk in the mall. Uh but uh if they really feel that they want the a s- a site there, which I think is going to be more of what it's going to be to eventually the bank is to have something with a sign on it, you know, with with the bank's name on it. But uh that doesn't help much, I suppose, as far as design is concerned and so forth. But I I uh I I'm not as concerned when I first heard it's heard them say a bank, you know, right in the middle of my cut-through. But but there you are. So uh and I want to thank Joe for his uh uh as much as you can insist, his insistence that we get a design that was different from what we originally saw. But if Barbara's back, you've got it.
I'm back. Thank you, Paul. Um Bill, you're up.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um I've got a couple of things. I think first on my list is is that one way uh that was made, it was uh existing as a dead end. Um and then some folks had talked about, I guess, prior to submission, two-way, and it's now one-way. I I again, I I I don't know how strongly I can say this, that I I think that was done as a dead end on purpose. I don't think that was an accident that that dead ended there. I think the plan is at that time got it right. I think we want to keep it to a dead end. So if you you come from um uh Meadow Road and you're coming through the parking lot, you've gotten, now you have a straight shot of a cut-through um versus before you had to bing bang bong around the parking lot. So I don't know how many times I can stress that. This this really should stay a a dead end. Now, the benefit of that is you get with that tree you talked about, Barbara, you get to keep that tree and you could you can expand those items because there's a couple of trees already on there that they're probably going to have to get rid of to do the to do that one way. So keep those trees and you could probably transplant that tree that you're going to have to remove right on that spot there. So you can make a beautiful landscape. Large island right there at that dead end. I think that's probably the play there. Um yeah, I I like I said last time, I said, I cannot support that with that with that uh traffic coming through that entrance. Because if you look and you're coming through from Lexington Street down and you come, we got traffic coming the other way there, coming in that one way. You come in and then you've got traffic coming against that. I I think that's really a bad spot, and I think the plan is, like I said, got that right originally. So I think we should keep that and then expand on that from a landscaping standpoint. My second point is going to be landscaping through the drive-through. So uh and that's on the we're going to try south, that's going to come east-west. So the south side on the drive-through, again, I like Joe, let's take a see what that looks like. But again, to maybe put some shrubs there, if you look at other drive-throughs, you see the shrubs which could be above the cars, so maybe you only see the cars tops. Because what you really don't want to see coming down Lexington Street is you have cars coming down Lexington Street on the right-hand side, and then right next to that with a strip of a couple of trees, you've got cars coming up through a drive-through. So if you can buffer that really with some nice thick shrubs, uh again, the landscaping plan will show uh what those cars are going to be sitting there looking like. Um but I think if you can really enhance that, uh another enhancement would be uh where you've got the concrete walk around there. I I again, I looked at the rendering, there might be a couple of plans there, but you really want to see if you can enhance around the the side, and it's going to be the west side uh of the of the building and then the and the uh the north side of the building. And you really see if you can get some landscaping in there versus just on the Lexington side, Lexington Street side. Uh and then the other thing is um you're going to be knocking down some poles, right, some some parking lot poles um to get to your site. As I'm looking here on another another side here. So you've got a tall one as you come in, right, right, right where it looks like uh maybe where it's right along the edge, there's a there's a there's a light, there's an existing hole you have there, is that say? Where where your tall parking light poles are, one's right at the edge of the entrance. And then you look down right where the bank's going to be, right at the edge, it's one of those tall parking light poles. And then if you're going to get rid of that uh that if you're going to put a stop sign in one way, which I we're going to be totally against, there's a pole right in the middle of of where you're going to do that one way in that stop sign, the stop line. So there's a pole there, a parking lot pole, because it's it's basically vegetation all the way around there except for that one spot where the pole is. So I think to Joe's point, for the removal of those parking lot poles, you probably want to have even around the site this to to continue to light where the the tall parking lot want to have even around the site to continue to light where the tall parking lot poles are going to be removed, is to have something in a nice, you know, colonial fashion, maybe to extend down there, a way down the blockway as well. That's what I had, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bill. This is Barbara again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to add a couple of things. You know, I mirror Member Gaffney's concern about the dead-end area. You know, I think it's probably better served for vegetation and trees rather than having that cut through. People do really, you know, they breeze through that parking lot. Again, mirroring Member Spahoe's concern with the crosswalk. That's obviously, you know, a concern for me as well. You know, either a raised sidewalk, maybe a speed bump might do the trick. Another thing that is kind of a concern for me is the arborvitae is around an ATM without seeing kind of, I think I'd rather see a shorter bush. I don't know, especially where in that area, it's a little on the darker side to Member Impemba's, Joe's point, you know, putting some lighting out there, I think, would be quite beneficial because again, it is very dark in that area. But maybe something less than an arborvitae, a smaller bush, that is a very high, it's a very transient area. I would be concerned that, you know, if I'm going to that ATM, it's darker, you know, without seeing any type of additional lighting in that area, you know, what, I guess it just poses a safety concern for me. And I think that was it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Brenda. This is Barbara again. Okay, I have a couple of things. I reiterate my concern about the crosswalk. And I have a question. Do we really think a whole lot of people are going to be crossing Mall Road to walk to the bank? Do we need to have that at all? Can we just not have that pathway extend across the grass and get rid of the crosswalk altogether? Do we need it? Because we all have concerns about the safety. It's nice to put signs up, but if people aren't paying attention, it still could be dangerous. So I'm wondering if it's really necessary to have that walkway at all? Could we just get rid of it? Anyone want to chime in on that? Okay, so you can.
I do feel like there's going to be a fair amount of, a fair amount of people crossing from the mall area over there to use the.
Walking, really?
Yeah, I would say so. Like, you know, at their lunch hour or things like that, people that are working over there because, you know, I think Lexington, I mean Lexington Citizens Bank, you know, they have a pretty good idea of where the clientele is coming from there. I think, you know, they've had that bank at Forty Mall Road for, you know, for a long time. So they, they have a pretty good gauge of, you know, where their traffic is coming from, I think. I kind of think you're gonna, you know, there's not a, if you look at the closest citizens banks, there's not a lot of them around. So, you know, people that use citizens, I think, I think you probably, if I were working in one of those and it was a nice day, I'd just soon walk over to the bank and use it on my lunch hour or break or something, you know? I mean.
Okay, fair enough. Maybe we can ask citizens too, how much they think that, how important they think that is to their business. I don't know what they think. Personally, I can't remember if I've ever walked to a bank, so I don't know.
So from a planning perspective, this is Kristen Kazner, but from a planning perspective, we always, if you don't give someone a path, they're never going to take it. If you give them a path in terms of walkability in the area, whether it's exactly in this location or not, you want to try to, you know, give people an option to do the right, not right, but options to if they want to walk. I mean, when citizens used to be over on Center Street, I mean, I think, you know, every town employee that did citizens walked over there, so.
I understand that. I don't think this is the same type of.
There's going to be a lot of employees, I mean, the mall is going to have a lot of employees. I mean, they do now and they will, they'll have even more now with all the buildup that's going on over there. You know, those people, you know, on a nice day, you know, they're going to do their bank and they're going to say, hey, you know, I might as well, I got a 20-minute break, let me just walk over and do my bank and I can, you know, walk at the same time. You know what I mean? I kind of think that'll, I kind of think it'll be used fairly frequently from a lot of the people that are working over at the mall. I don't think anybody going to the mall, you know, patronizing the mall is going to walk over to the bank. I think it's pretty much going to be the employees of all the places around there that are going to be, you know, on a nice, on a day, spring days, you know?
I hear what you're saying. I would like, two things, I'd like to hear from the bank as to how important they think that is to them. And secondly, I, I agree that we always want to encourage people to walk whenever we can, but we don't want to encourage them to walk across drive-aisles. We don't want to avoid drive-throughs. The people who are going into a drive-through aren't expecting to see people crossing it. So if it's necessary, if it's something that we feel is important, let's figure out another place to put it or another, make it a little meandering thing that comes out somewhere else. I don't like it walking, going across the drive-through. So that's one thing.
Excuse me, this is Jen. You're going to have to make a motion to waive the one-hour time constraint on this one item.
I think we're almost done, but I guess I would like to have a motion to do that, please. If someone could do that.
Can we continue?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we're going to be continuing anyway, right?
I know. I'm just going to say one quick thing then. Can I have somebody go down there and mark which trees you think you're going to take down with a, somehow mark them so we can see which ones are going to be removed? And I agree with Brenda and Bill, I don't understand the reason for making that, getting rid of that dead end and making it a through. So we can discuss that more at the next time. Why don't we continue this to the next hearing?
Can I say one thing quick before we keep going? Just one thing. So at this hearing, we intentionally didn't get too much into the cut-through. We do want to have a conversation and with the traffic safety officer as well as members of this board who would like to have a conversation before the next meeting with, that we can bring to the, you don't need to make any determiners, but kind of look through some scenarios of how this can lay out with the applicant, I think is important. So it's not just, let's put a curb back or not put a curb back or fill it in. I think there's scenarios we need to work through. So I would ask those that are interested in having those conversations over the next week and week or so, contact me so we can set up that meeting to work through a couple of different scenarios to bring back to the board at the next meeting.
Okay, well, I'll tell you, Barbara, again, I definitely am interested in it and I just want to make sure that the applicant heard, I'm asking them to mark these with a ribbon or something that's going to stay there so we can drive down and find out which trees are going to be removed.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is Phil Henry. I'd just like to get some direction on some of our homework. There was, someone had indicated that they wanted to see a rendering. Are we talking a colored site plan or a horizontal rendering as if you were walking on Lexington Street? To make sure that, you know, we can provide or say we can't provide what exactly is being asked of us. And then secondly, there was some talk about adding some landscaping. From what I, from what I heard is on like the west side of the Lexington Street access in between where cars would empty out of the ATM and the Lexington Street, curb cut, adding some shrubs there. We purposely did not put anything there and I think I would recommend that we keep it that way or at least maybe just introducing something very low, anything more than three feet or even less than that. I think you're, you can be affecting sightlines. We want people seeing, we want people entering Lexington Street seeing cars exiting onto Lexington Street. And I don't, I wouldn't recommend, you know, hindering, hindering that sightline at all.
Yeah, take a look at that transformer that you're going to put in, see how you can buffer that as well.
Okay. So Henry, do you have any other questions?
I guess I would just like some direction on whoever made the rendering comment.
The rendering, I want to see an actual, like a, I want an actual rendering, a color rendering of the exact plants and the locations of those plants and then a, you know, some pictures of the existing landscaping and so we can understand what's going to be taken out of there as well.
Bill, maybe staff can give an example of what we've seen before, kind of a best-in-class to do that rendering. Staff, can you send them something?
Yeah, so I think it's a question whether, you know, you take the photo and drop in the bank and add the, add the additional landscaping or you have a rendering and, you know, mark out the existing trees and the new vegetation. Yeah, we can, we can work through that and I think, you know, Mark's worked with us enough to kind of try to figure out an example of what we might be looking for.
Yeah, I think we can accommodate that for the next meeting.
Thank you. Can we have a motion? Because if we're not going to move this to the next meeting, we need to make a motion to go past the hour because we've already done that.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the meeting of June 4th, 2020.
Make one comment before we vote on it, just one comment. I'm not sure if they want to put in any of the lighting we talked about in the rendering, but, you know, add any of that into the, into the mix, the lighting along the walkway and the antique lighting, you know, along the sidewalk and whatnot and the site itself. So again, if you want to add that, add that if, you know, if you, when you come back with the rendering.
Barbara, thank you, Joe. The motion has been moved and seconded to continue to June 4th, 2020.
Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba. Member Clerk Españo. Member Covino. Member Raymond.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Appleport.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This is Barbara again. The next item on our agenda is minutes. We have minutes from April 16, 2020 and May 7, 2020. Has anyone had a chance to review them?
Yes.
Okay. I know I had made a few adjustments or changes to Brady. Let's, if we can, let's vote on those right away. Do we have to vote separately or can everybody vote on both?
We can take a motion to take both of them to, to take motion to approve April 16, 2020 and May 7, 2020.
Second.
Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba. Member Clerk Españo.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Raymond.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Appleport.
You're muted.
Okay, so that was just to take them together. Now we need to vote on the minutes, to accept the minutes, correct?
Oh, no, no, I just made the motion to approve both of them. So you're all set.
Great.
Sorry, I was unmuted, yes.
All right, thank you. Then moving on, we just have a few discussion matters and I'll let Kristen fill us in on those, the master plan and town hall.
Sure. So over quite some time, we have had kind of presented certain elements of the master plan for kind of general consensus among the board. The only two that we have not had that discussion and consensus is housing and town center. We did start talking about housing and, but we hadn't reached consensus yet. And town center element, we have not yet brought forward. So we understand that we do have new membership. We will be putting all elements available for review, the, beginning the rollout next week. We would ideally like to put them in a Google Drive for Google editing, just so we don't have to sit and try to capture all the comments and then go through a whole nother round of editing. So those of you that may have difficulty with that, that would like to still look and edit, please let us know. And if you want printouts, let us know and we can put them in the mail for you. But anyway, to just facilitate that, you know, the format in which you want to read, if you want a printout and then you want to make comments in Google, however you want it, just let us know what's easiest for you to comment. For us, the easiest way is to put it on Google Drive and to let you guys comment in the live document. And that's what we are suggesting. But also just want to hear from you over the next couple of days if that works, doesn't work, or if you'd like to do something different.
Okay, this is Barbara and I think that's great. All I have to say about is just, we need to get this moving. So I don't think we should let anything stand in our way of getting those out next week.
Okay, sounds good. Also, just an update, town hall is scheduled for 100% of staff to return on June 1st. The town hall at this point is closed to the public. Those of us and other employees that are managing childcare or working with HR to figure out kind of that transition, but you will see many people back in the office beginning June 1st. They have spaced people out, it's, I don't know, as an employee, it's, I think they've been doing a good job trying to figure it all out, but it's definitely a big task to, well, it's a big task to take everyone remote. I'm really pleased to say that I think our office has, was well, well-prepared, especially with our permitting software online. So I'm very pleased about that. The last item is the MWRA, as we were talking in the pre-meeting with the chair and vice chair today, the MWRA has approved Burlington's application to move forward with the connection. It's an important step in really allowing for us to continue economic development to ensure we have high quality in the water quality moving forward. As you know, life science and water quality is huge, is huge for life science companies, which we're definitely trying to attract to Burlington. But it is a multi-year project that we have to go through Lexington to connect in with Arlington. There is some efforts that I've been a part of the discussion in terms of trying to figure out ways that we can work with the state to try to expedite getting those connections made and other state opportunities. But, but I just wanted to throw it out there to you guys because I know some of you have some thoughts about it and, and understand kind of the importance of this connection. So with that, I just want to leave it up, give a brief summary and leave it up to any of you who just wanted to make a comment and/or if you wanted to be part of the larger discussion, wanted to just kind of know that so I can make, voice that to others.
Hi, this is Barbara. One other thing that's not on there, I don't think it's something for us to discuss now, but something I want everybody to start thinking about, the joint letter that we voted to send forward with the Board of Selectmen, hopefully. I think it's, it's sort of just sort of, it's just communicating to the business community that we want to work with them and we want to move forward. But soon after that, we're going to have to come up with actual rules and procedures to make things go smoothly. We want to set enough rules up so that if businesses are following all of those rules, they can just move forward and they don't all have to come to us. But we're going to have to spend a lot of time thinking about what those rules should be. So I kind of would like everybody to just sort of keep that in your, in your mind, pay attention to what you hear about going on in other communities so that when we have to put together our own rules and procedures, we're all, we've all spent a good deal of time thinking about it and we're ready to move forward on that. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just a quick question back on the MWRA, if I may.
Yes.
I think with the shelter of place, a lot of people have spent a lot of time at the rez, myself included, you know, my family goes down there all the time now, my, you know, my extended family, neighbors, everyone's down there and I'm on the other side of town. With talking into the MWRA, is there any thought, or maybe if people can't think about using the rez as more of a recreation spot, if we're not going to be solely, you know, using that for the town's water, you know, things like, you know, can you canoe a kayak in there, you know, some enhanced recreational use versus what it is today? So maybe just, that's a thought we go forward.
That's a great, that's a great thing to think about, Bill. Yeah, great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, anyone else have anything they want to bring forward?
I have a question for Kristen. I'm still on the MWRA. The approval that we got, is it for the full connection or the one million gallon connection?
It's the full connection. It's the full connection. We had to have them review the whole thing.
Thank you.
Honestly, I'm not, you know, I I'm not the, I'm kind of secondhand information, trying to relay it to you. I'm hoping to get kind of more firsthand to be able to to let you know. So, you know, as I try to understand, trying to get you guys involved because I do think it's an important next step for for the town in terms of future planning and where we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we close out the meeting, I wanted to say a couple of quick things. I wanted to, first of all, agree with what was said by Frank earlier that our staff is doing a great job running these meetings. It's not easy and it goes so smoothly. And I really appreciate all the work that goes into that. And two, I wanted to thank Brady for keeping us so up to date on our minutes. I don't think we've ever been this up to date on our minutes and it's wonderful. So thank you, Brady.
No problem.
Anyone want to make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call. Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Españo.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Raymond.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, everybody. And stay safe.
Thanks, you guys. Stay safe.
Have a great weekend.
Try and keep chasing Google.